Good evening, ma'am, and welcome to the pre-meeting of the Westminster City Council meeting for October 25th, 2021. We are going to enter into two executive sessions. I'm going to ask City Attorney Frankel to please read us into those sessions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first executive session that's proposed is for a discussion of a personnel matter, discussion of a proposed employment agreement, terms for interim city manager pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 113(c)(1) and Colorado Revised Statute 246(402)(4) F1.
Members of council, you have just heard the title of the executive session. I am going to poll each of you to see if you are willing to enter into an executive session. Starting on my right, I will start with Counselor Scully.
Yes, ma'am, I'm ready.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Demont.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Volz.
Yes.
And the mayor as well. Mr. Frankel, will you please read the second agenda title?
Thank you. The second executive session that's proposed for the pre-meeting is to discuss possible acquisition of real property located at 9889 Alkire Street and to instruct negotiators as authorized by Westminster Municipal Code 113(c)(2) and Colorado Revised Statute 246(402)(4) A and E1.
Members of council, you have heard the title of this executive session. I will poll each of you to see if you are willing to enter into executive session. Starting on my right again, Counselor Scully.
Yes, ma'am, I'm ready.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Demont.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
And Counselor Volz.
Yes.
And the mayor as well. Thank you, everyone. We will be back at 7 o'clock for our normal start time for the Westminster City Council meeting.[143.56]
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 25th, 2021 Westminster City Council Meeting. We appreciate you all coming out tonight. It's great to have a full room. We would remind you to please turn off or silence your cellphones. We'd like an uninterrupted meeting. The city has resumed meeting in person for city council meetings with the option for virtual participation by council and staff and the public as necessary. In addition to in-person attendance, the community may participate remotely by watching the live stream and on the city YouTube channel, or by dialing in by phone with the instructions on the meeting agenda webpage. We continue to support multiple opportunities for public comment, including in-person testimony, or if you let the city know by noon on the Monday of the meeting, you can participate by email, voicemail, and live remote audio. So for best options, go to the city website, and you can see how to sign up for that. Now I would ask all of you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Acting City Clerk Fitch, can you please do the roll call?
Mayor Protem Demat.
Present.
Mayor Sykes.
Here.
Councillor Seymour.
Here.
Councillor Scully.
Here.
Councillor Smith.
Present.
And Councillor Vols.
Here.
The next item before us is the minutes of the preceding meeting. Can I get a motion? Mayor Protem Demat.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of October 11th, 2021 meeting as presented.
Councillor Vols.
I second the motion.
There has been a motion in a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on the minutes? Being none, this is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The meetings are, the meeting minutes are approved. The next item before us is public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with the city council on any topic they choose, unless there is a topic for which a public hearing is also scheduled. There are no public hearings scheduled on this evening's agenda. The current public comment portion of the meeting is not intended to be conversational, but rather a direct communication from the public to their representatives. There are four methods available for participation in public comment. You may testify in person, submit written email testimony, record a voicemail to be played back during the meeting, or request to speak live during the meeting. Please see the posted agenda for details on how to participate using any of those methods available. At this time, I would like to ask the interim city clerk to please summarize the number of participants this evening and to introduce our first speaker.
Yes, we received nine emails that submitted by the deadline, and they have been added to the packet for the public to review. We received three voicemails that will be played back after the live speakers, and we have 13 people signed up to speak live. The first speaker is Karen Calaberty.
Thank you so much. Ms. Calaberty, please feel free to come forward. Just as a reminder, everyone has five minutes to speak. You will have a light that comes on when you have two minutes remaining, and you cannot use any visual aids.
Hello, my name is Karen Calaberty. I am here again about the comprehensive plan specifically with sideline of the Uplands or the Pillar of Fire site. I feel strongly that that site should be included in the comprehensive plan in a different way than as if it were built out. That still is a transitional space, and I really think that the parks component of the comprehensive plan needs to be worked out before the comprehensive plan is adopted, and that space itself would be very appropriate for a parks space as a transitional zone. I've spoken on this matter a few different times, but the comprehensive plan, in my opinion, there's been work done on it, but it was pre-pandemic work. Habits have changed already since the pandemic. People are working from home. There's less need for office space, that kind of thing. So there's a few changes with the comprehensive plan that I think are appropriate to include before it's adopted. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Eric Johnson is the next speaker.
Hi, my name is Eric Johnson. I own Electric City Repair and Records on 72nd and Lowell Boulevard, and I'm also a resident of the Harris Park area. And that's what I'm here for, the public comments on the, on the comprehensive plan. Like to start by saying, I think the Harris Park Plan is actually a very good plan, because it was drafted mostly through the input of the community. I attended all three public meetings, and what I saw was a diverse group of residents and business owners discussing what they liked about the area, what they didn't like about the area, and what they'd like to see in the area, what they'd like to see improved. And I read over the plan, and it really reflects what was going on in the meetings there. As a resident, I'd like to see improvements in this plan. So maybe kids would have a park to go play at. We wouldn't have to drive them all the way to Arvada to go to a park, or way northwest Westminster. And as a business owner, I'd really like to expand the retail side of my business, but it's kind of hard to do, and not a lot of people go to the area. Cities have recently discovered that original parts of the city, when not ignored, can be great places for small business and attracting visitors. Downtown Golden, Old Town Arvada, for example, those places have really been doing good. And this generates sales tax revenue, of course, and that's what you guys like. And it would bring people to my business. Business would do better. That's what I like, and the residents would have, have a nicer looking place and a safer place to go home. The only part of the plan I didn't like, I read all the way through it. It was, it was pretty long. Lots of, lots of pictures and drawings and words and stuff. But yeah, yeah, I could go further down. The only part I didn't like was the part where my building and 7-Eleven were sort of deleted from the area for a Lowell Boulevard gateway. And I know that's not set in the plans. It's not 100% guaranteed. But, you know, I'd hope the, hope the city would work with existing businesses that have been there collecting sales tax revenue, putting a lot of investment into, and the Woe is kind of a declining block. And we do what we can. But I'd really like to see the area be up and coming. That'd be great. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
The next speaker is Christina Eisenstein.
Very good job. Hi, my name's Christina Eisenstein. I've been working in southwest Westminster for about six years now. I'm a mom of three boys. My most recent accomplishment in the area was the Babe Walls Mural Festival. I was the one who organized all of that along with Alexandra Pangburn. And I've always had a hope and a vision for the area to be really hip. I mean, there's a beautiful train station there. I've always referred to it, even with our current tenants, as it's like the Brooklyn of Denver. You know, it's hip, it's cool. I've got tenants that are, have split households between Boulder and Denver. And I've worked on about five buildings in the area, and there's, and it's great. And I've, you know, Brinkman's gonna have something with me, because I have more development there than he has. But the thing that bothers me, or the thing that I've had personal experience with in, in that area, is the crime that ensues from two specific spots, and that is the stone yard, and there's a junkyard. And the addresses of those are 70, 71 Lowell Boulevard and 6921. I've had to clean out heroin needles emanating from that area. As I said, I'm a mom of three boys. I don't feel safe taking my boys to the nature park. And I'm working so hard as just a single person trying to improve the area. And I think that that area deserves some attention and some love. And I think the best way to do that is to allow mixed-use development on the space, some retail space, some housing. The area needs to go. It can't coexist with what we're trying to do to improve the area. And I just want to finish with one thing that was so meaning, well, actually, before I get to that, we even had a tenant who worked at the stone yard, and it was a nightmare. He held our building under hostage. We gave, you know, we just allowed him to be a tenant, and there was crystal meth, and there were drugs, and the people were running through the hallways at night. My college grad student tenants were calling, saying, who, who's in apartment 201? What happened? And that is the community from those two specific addresses. And he might know a little more about it than I do, but it's, it's all there. And the thing I learned from Babe Walls is it doesn't take a lot. It takes some love and attention. And a little girl went up to one of our artists, Lindy Zimmer, as she was painting a building, and she looked at her, and she said, "Thank you. Thank you for making my neighborhood feel safer." So it's amazing what you can do with some paint and a little bit of love.
Thank you so much for your comments.
The next speaker is Shelley Leon.
Hi, my name is Shelley Leon. I live in the area next to the nursing home, Clear Creek Nursing Home on 75th and Lowell. And it's about a weekly walk that I do from 75th and Lowell to about 64th and Lowell. And I very much enjoy picking up garbage. But my concern is, as I'm cleaning up the area on both sides, there is not only a lot of broken beer glasses, you know, beer bottles, glass of all kinds, but there is also the syringes and around the railroad tracks, bilateral, I think 71st, where the light rail is, it's like basically underneath the bridge, bilateral, where the, I think it's recycling body parts for cars. And then towards the light rail is where a lot of the drug paraphernalia I'm finding. And what it is, is anywhere from the needles to batteries to tin foil and wire. Where they're getting wire from is, I don't know if it's from these green, it's near the railroad tracks, and they're, they're like tearing apart metal. And I'm finding pieces of metal that are laying all around that nice, beautiful stream and the beautiful parks that they're building. So my concern is, there are children in that area, and there is a lot of bad things that I'm picking up around there. And I do do this weekly, because the area looks so much better when it's clean, you know? And to invite investors into this part of Westminster, it has to stay clean. So I work on 72nd from Hooker to Lowell, and that's almost a weekly thing. And then going underneath the bridge is almost like every other day. And it just seems like if I can't keep up with the paraphernalia that I'm finding. And so my question is, is there are committees that can make their rounds like every other day or every third day in order to keep this safe, and that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Leon, for coming.
The next speaker is Michael Eisenstein.
Hello. Could you hear me?
I can hear you.
My name is Michael Eisenstein. I've been working around in the Westminster station area for around six years, like my wife, investing in properties, landlord-ing, working with local businesses that rent out our space. I'm also heavily involved in land in that area. I helped put together the North Gate pieces across federal. It's 27 and a half acres, which we're trying to get developed and made into something beautiful. Currently, it's in litigation, but that should be resolved next month, so we can proceed with that one. I also have assembled property right around the nature play park, which is, by the way, magnificent. It's so proud to see that come up. But the problem is, there's unbelievable amount of drugs and crime right around that nature park. We know I own a storage facility adjacent to the nature park. It's a constant battle to get people out of storage facilities that are sneaking in, breaking locks, getting in and out. Drug paraphernalia has to be picked up almost daily. In the nature park itself, there's drug paraphernalia. There's also sometimes scattered loose clothing that was taken off the night before. It's hell. What I'm talking about mainly in regards to the comp plan is we have spoken about this for close to a year, year and a half, and have been met stonewall. Basically, there's a line on Lowell Boulevard that creates the boundary to the station area. And for a year and a half, we have been trying our hardest to explain. The station area is the perimeter of the station. It's the nature park. It's the park that surrounds the station. That is the station. An arbitrary line that cuts through it does not let investment dollars seep into these regions, which need dollars to clean it up, to develop something great for the city, to get. for the city, to get retail receipts. That's where you get a lot of money around these stations. People go, there'll be an ice cream place, there'll be a pizza place around that nature park, we want that. What is there now is dangerous, and it's very frustrating to be ignored for a year and a year and a half, and actually to be punished with de-zoning because we spoke up. To me, it's not planning. Someone who keeps blight or protects blight is not a planner, and we need help in this area. We have put a lot of time and money ourselves, but we have developers from the city that want to come in and clean it up and make it beautiful, and solve the crime problem of the station area. So that's kind of what I'm here for, I'm hoping that if this comp plan is passed, that we could redraw that boundary to include this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is J.D. Leonard.
Can I turn my phone on?
Yeah. Oh, turn it on?
Yeah, for part of my presentation.
Are you reading your notes?
I've got notes, but I also have part of my presentation because my comments are noise from Rocky Mountain Regional Airport.
We cannot have audio visual aids, I appreciate you asking.
Not a problem.
I apologize, it wasn't clear about that.
My name is J.D. Leonard, I live at 9950 West 105th Avenue, right next to Mayfair Park, I think relatively close to where Mr. Demott lives. So he's maybe familiar with some of the issues that we are encountering in our neighborhood this summer. A great part of where we live is being next to Mayfair Park and its adjoining open space. I've noted that all the people running, from all the propaganda we've gotten the last couple of weeks, are talking about open space, but none of them address the open space around our home and above our home. This past six months, Rocky Mountain Regional Airport has decided that every training flight needs to fly over Westminster, and they fly right down Independence and turn right above our houses. You can't enjoy a cup of coffee in the morning with your neighbor, you can't have a beer on your deck in the afternoon, because you can't talk, because every one minute or less a plane is flying over your home. And it goes on, it starts at 6:15 in the morning and doesn't end until 10 o'clock. Now, right now, because it's getting light later, this morning, the first flight wasn't until 7:47, so it's changing a little bit. When I was leaving to drive over here at 6:35, there was a plane going by. So they're continually there, and they don't seem to want to end, so I'm asking for Westminster's help, because one of the great things about owning a home, and I've lived in Colorado for 42 years, Westminster for 19 years in the same house, is that your home value appreciates. Well, these flights are not making my home value appreciate. You hear the planes in your house, you hear the planes outside of your house. It's just a constant drone, and something needs to somehow change. I sat in on the meeting for the noise council, which Catherine Scully was at, and I sent her an email that day, which I did not get a reply to, along with Ms. Kraftstark, who did reply to my email, about the noise. During that meeting, and I screwed up somehow, and so I didn't get to be included in it, the meeting started at 9 o'clock, and as of 10:28, there were 26 flights over my home during that time period, all documented here, some within one minute of each other, some two to three minutes apart. So it just continues constantly, and I'm here to ask the City of Westminster to get involved in somehow changing this flight pattern, because it's impacting the quality of our lives who live in that area. And it's, it wasn't like this three years ago. This has just really happened now, and I gotta believe that Jefferson County doesn't want to fly over Bloomfield, doesn't want to fly over Boulder County, because they're afraid of all the new development that they want to go on at that airport being impacted if they get those communities upset as well, where we live in Jefferson County, we're sort of stuck with some of their noise. Matt Jones from the Boulder County Commission that day addressed the whole board there and said, "This isn't about a noise commission, it's about a development commission." And after listening to that, I totally had to agree with him. It was all totally about the development on the south side of the Rocky Mountain Airport, and it's not about controlling the noise. So I'm here to, like I said, ask for your help in somehow addressing this noise and getting the flights changed, so it's not six days a week constantly. Sundays, we get a little break for a couple hours in the morning, but by Sunday afternoon, they're flying again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. The next speaker is Fred Cook.
Hello, council members. I'm here to speak in favor of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. It's, we hope will be developed or adopted by council. We've been developers here in the City of Westminster for over 20 years. We've done the Huntington Trails development, we were instrumental in bringing Centura Health to 144th Avenue, and we've also were involved with the development of all the commercial around that project. We have, over the recent current time period of about three years, we've, our projects have been stymied because we had passed, we had adopted a preliminary development plan that had a number of uses that are in conflict with the current Comprehensive Land Use Plan. We have these, all the uses that we're proposing, we've been working for the past three years with city staff, and we've felt that we came up with a great plan that addressed all the city's objectives. Most importantly, we're the use of the, or the, we addressed the needs of the community as far as the natural resources in the area we're concerned, and we've got, now we've got people ready to purchase our properties that are all complementary uses to the Centura project, and we feel that we're going to be creating somewhere between 350 to 400 jobs immediately in the next 18 months, and we'll also be creating another 400 jobs over the next three to four years. And with all that said, with all the jobs that are going to be being added, as well as the uses that we believe really are working with the city with their objectives in the area, we'd like to recommend that council approve the new Comprehensive Land Use Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Andy Hensler.
Thank you. I'm also here to speak on behalf of the comp plan and urge council to adopt this plan. I think it makes significant improvements over the status quo. I think planning staff in the city should be commended for the fantastic process, much more public comment and participation than in any other comprehensive plan update in the history of this city that I'm aware of. I think that the plan addresses the unprecedented shifts in climate, demographics, and overall environment fairly elegantly, with a light touch, changing the land use designation for less than 2% of the property, and really relying more on standards and objectives to guide future review of development proposals. Despite the projected population growth, along the front range, the 2040 Plan update actually contemplates a reduced number of residential units relative to the current plan, which shows a smart growth approach that's commendable. In fact, as I review a lot of the comments that are in the public record, no one seems to be opposed to job growth or smart growth, only to residential growth. But what a lot of these commenters seem to miss is that jobs without housing is only going to lead to increased commutes, increased environmental impacts, increased traffic congestion from longer distance commuters. The 2040 Plan anticipates and gets ahead of these negative impacts by adding residential land use in areas already connected by public transportation and existing trail systems. Smart, modern planning encourages residential uses that are proximate to commercial and business industrial hubs to reduce traffic congestion and environmental impacts. The 2040 Plan does this. Changing demographics are known. We expect smaller households in the future and greater diversity along with an aging population. The 2040 Plan accommodates these demographic shifts by contemplating new residential uses, largely focused on medium or higher density developments that will allow for smaller-sized residences and more attainable price points. What's less known are the changes in a post-COVID world. One thing that seems certain is that changes, is that both employers and employees are looking for additional flexibility. From remote working to changed office experiences, locating residential uses closer to employment centers provides greater flexibility to employers and employees, and allows non-traditional commuting options like, you know, actually walking to work, riding your bike to work. On my way over here, I saw somebody on one of those little motorized scooters with lights on, I didn't know they had those. In a post-COVID world, some employees are free to live where they want instead of where an employer tells them to. Colorado has seen a massive increase in population, people moving from the coasts. They're drawn for all the reasons that those of us that moved here came here, right? It's for the recreation, for the open space, for the beautiful views, and the 2040 Plan does a really good job of preserving these factors that make Westminster a desirable place to live. For example, the 2040 Plan allows for higher density residential development that is clustered to allow for increased open space, which would benefit the community at large and ameliorate the negative impacts of Heat Islands and Sprawl. The Comprehensive Plan paves the way for this type of thoughtful development, and it's up to the city staff and elected officials to enforce open space requirements as these development proposals come through. The type of intelligent increases in density, encouraging multifamily residential settings rather than single-family, are far better for water usage, as multifamily residential properties have been shown to use less water than single-family residences. Researching coordination with Denver Water shows that multifamily residences in Colorado use less than half of the water used by single-family residences. Many of the concerns that I've seen in the public record are about land uses approved under the current plan and the failure of the proposed 2040 Plan to change those uses, rather than concerns that are focused on changes proposed by the 2040 Plan. These are not reasons to reject a good Comprehensive Plan update. I want to thank you for your time and for the great work, specifically by the planning staff, and encourage you to approve the Comprehensive Plan update. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. The next speaker is Larry Valente.
Good evening. I'm not the most favorable to this Comprehensive Plan update, but it doesn't matter, you guys are going to do what you're going to do. I am very favorable to the Harris Park update. I think Ms. Trawler and her team have done a remarkable job, and she's probably the first person who's worked in our part of the city, who's really actually taken the time to understand the needs, the desires, et cetera, instead of allowing herself to be hamstrung by council statement projects that fit personal agendas. But my main reason for coming tonight is, last week it came to light and was on the news, that you guys approved a very repugnant contract with a now ex-city employee that cost the city nearly half a million dollars for somebody who left voluntarily. You got a couple more contracts tonight that have very big payouts built into it, specifically the city attorney. While I have no issues with the city attorney, I think giving anybody a contract that gives them 12 months if they just choose to go on to another job is not good fiscal responsibility in any time. The fact that you couldn't comment on camera tells me you made a half-million-dollar blunder that cost the city. I would suggest you revisit those clauses and get rid of them, and let's be mindful that the taxpayer dollars belong to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Wright.
Greetings. I'm David Wright, I'm the pastor of Westminster Presbyterian Church. First, I would like to wholeheartedly offer my support regarding the Harris Park Community Vision Plan. This proposal is built on three years of work by our City of Westminster staff with a direct town hall and workshop input of more than 100 Harris Park neighbors and residents. I believe the Harris Park Community Vision Plan will firstly encourage business development in our neighborhood, both along the historic 73rd Avenue Arts Quarter and also in 72nd. The work and partnership that has gone into this is a testimony towards our city's efforts not only to support existing businesses, but to creatively furnish new endeavors. And the foundation of all this work was the direct feedback of our neighbors and friends. I also appreciate the focus in this plan towards the beautification of our neighborhood. Not only were its organizers interested in developing properties, but they offered and solicited specific feedback regarding aesthetic of how neighbors would like our area to look. But the emphasis that I would like to make on this plan is towards the development of new housing, especially affordable housing opportunities. Harris Park is currently the home of some units that are both available for transitional housing for families who have experienced homelessness, and also designated affordable senior housing. We welcome and encourage more of the same. But with my endorsement for this plan, I also have a request for council. A significant concern I know I share with many is the lack of social services in our neighborhood. And this is a major concern, especially in the COVID-19 pandemic. The lack of services for unhoused individuals and families include those who are sleeping in cars, hotels, who are doubled up in friends or family housing beyond its intended use, or who are sleeping outdoors. There are no overnight year-round shelters in the City of Westminster, nor is there a day center which would serve as an access hub towards needed social services. Now, on an encouraging note, the Harris Park neighborhood is currently served by three food banks, Fish of Westminster, Growing Home, and Have a Heart. And these three have combined to serve not only ready-to-eat and shelf-stable food, but also clothing, houseware, survival supplies, hygiene items, and referral towards services. The City of Westminster also created and funded a staff position for a homeless navigator, a highly trained individual who helps persons who are unhoused access services. These include emergency needs, shelter on a cold night, and access to long-term goals such as permanent housing, healthcare, legal services, and employment. The current homeless navigator is Ash Rudd. I want to thank you, our councilors, for finding this position, and I'd like to thank Kate Skarback for her direction in making this position possible. At the church, we work very closely with Ash, our homeless navigator for the city, and through this partnership, Ash is able to use the church to meet with clients and to give them mailing addresses so they can receive essential documents like identification. To give you a scope of homelessness in our Harris Park neighborhood, through our street outreach, we have identified 100 unique unhoused individuals who are dwelling within one mile of Westminster Presbyterian Church during 2020. Now finally, I'd like to make an appeal to you as councilors, that I know we are in the midst of an election season. Homelessness is a difficult issue, and I realize that many of you are running for reelection and are in a vulnerable position. As a pastor, I do not endorse any candidates, but I pledge, along with our church, to work with you however we can for the betterment of our neighborhood. And I offer the prayer of Philippians 2, 3, and 4. Let none of you act out of, let none of us act out of selfish ambition or conceit, but in humility regard others as better than yourselves. Thank you. My timer didn't work, so I don't know if it was on record.
You were under five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Pastor. The next speaker is Bev Capra.
Good evening, council.
Welcome.
I'm Bev Capra, a resident, lifetime resident of Westminster. I own property, and I also have a business in the area. You can't hear me? This is better? Is that better? Okay, do you want me to start over? Okay. My concern tonight, I have several concerns, but the one I want to address tonight... My concern tonight, I have several concerns, but the one I want to address tonight is that the City of Westminster has named the area between Lowell and Bradburn on 73rd as the Historic Westminster Art District. But the city doesn't support that at all. They, they're the ones that actually named that area, gave it that designation, but there's not, there's no support. They don't advertise, they don't, I'm not here looking for advertisement for my business for the area. Golden advertises theirs, they talk about theirs, Arvada, Broomfield, but we really don't have the total support of the city for that particular area. That's pretty much what I wanted to say tonight. That was the one issue that I wanted to bring about. There's other, other issues, but we'll save that for another time. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Barb Struck.
I'm a resident of the Harris Park Historic Area. As I stand before you, I feel like a parent talking to teenagers in their rebellion years. They give you the blank stare, and my words seem to bounce off a brick wall. You listen, but you don't hear us, such as the water rates and the farm development, and also the rodeo market. It would be a great for a youth center. You are willing to spend over $650,000 to repair the building for a developer, but you can't spend it on a place for us? Are we invisible down there? Don't you see us? We pay taxes, but we're invisible to you. Then the small detail about a business called Creative Corner on 73rd Avenue. They can't sell fancy coffees because of a grease trap? They have been promised several times it will be reviewed, it will be reviewed. We need to take it to this department. They have filled out necessary paperwork, always promised it would be reviewed. Or the city will help pay for it, only to find out that so many stipulations are in that, it's almost comical to read. Once again, that brick wall, I think it's called passing the buck. We have two buildings that you have torn down for low-income housing. Now they are ISOs. Something about removing gas tanks? Wait, the brick wall is getting higher. You have shown us plans and more plans and more surveys. How much is it costing us, the taxpayers? Maybe the philosophy of dazzling them with lots of paperwork, more paperwork and more promises, and they will get tired of asking and calling. Are you playing favorites? Wait, the brick wall is getting higher. So our neighborhood is blighted, and no one in this city council will give me a straight answer on why you voted to do that to us. Could it be you're receiving tax, tax credits? If you are, I want my share of them. Maybe you should move back down to our neighborhood so you can look at all, look at all of the days that we have to look at those blighted areas that you call blighted and those two places where we now have ISOs, where you've torn down buildings. But wait, the brick wall is getting higher. At a neighborhood get-together, I asked one of you about a rebate on my landscape, on my landscaping. She took my email address and phone number and assured me that she would get back to me. Once again, no phone calls, no email, another brick wall. I don't want to hear the excuse that I've been too busy. I'm being ignored. So now as teenagers, you have decided to take money out of my checking account without my knowledge of where the money is going. I had asked a simple question. We are now down to at least 25 police officers that have resigned. Where's the money going? You had already allocated it into the budget. After several tries of getting the answer, I finally discovered the police money is in the general fund. Anybody can use it. Shame on you. You must not think too highly of our police officers to make, take money from them. So can I call you when there's a shooting, a death, a break-in, or a family violence situation? Can I put your life in danger? Can I put your phone numbers in my speed dial? Because I sure will call you when there's something happens like that. Wait, the brick wall is growing taller and becoming reinforced. The greatest insult a teenager, a teenage could give me is hiding the truth and distorting it. Once again, into my checking account, I'm giving the city manager over $455,000 for his retirement. I understand it has to be unanimous vote to not, I repeat, not give him the money. Fat chance. No brick wall there, is there? He didn't even live here. Oh, wait a minute. All he did was a residence address. He didn't even have to live here. You haven't responded to Channel 7 or the Denver Post article, or I haven't heard a response. Isn't your teenage theory, close the door and it will go away?
Miss Struck, I apologize, but you're out of time.
Okay, thank you very much.
The next speaker is Craig Russell.
My name is Craig Russell. I've been here since about 1983, about 39 years in the city of Westminster. Own some residential properties here. Own one up on Turnpike Drive, a couple down on West 70th Place, all in the Harrisburg area, the blighted area of Westminster that seems to have a bunch of drug problems, a bunch of crime problems, that we're putting in new parks that we can't even keep safe to. I agree with a lot of the things that I've heard here before that, you know, this area has been completely ignored. But I would like to, to mention that we do have a residential property maintenance code that we get to abide by as well, that the intention of that is to get rid of all the slum lords that live there and, and take care of that place and overcharge for rents and things and to beautify the, the neighborhood. And I think the intentions of that has been absolutely fantastic, and I'm glad that program we got started a little over 20 years ago. But I'm afraid that that program has either run its course or just gotten a little bit involved in itself. It started out as a safety program where we made sure smoke detectors were working and, and that people were being adequately taken care of from evil landlords like myself that, you know, can't take care of their properties. But unfortunately, it's become violations or simply that the grass isn't green enough or there's not enough rocks, we're not landscaping properly. I have a whole list of violations on those on my properties, I'm afraid. Although when you talk to Holly or Debbie or those, they've all, all told, told me anyway that they would love to have more landlords like myself here in the Westminster area because we have done such a good job of rebuilding our areas and bringing in quality tenants and probably have lower rents than most of the other places have as well. So I'd like you to look at the rental maintenance property code and reevaluate if dirt should really be illegal in Westminster as it is in that code, because there's too many unapproved surfaces that we can't have. And then they're sending me fines if I don't get them done quick enough. Fortunately with COVID and not being able to collect rents, our budget constraints have increased. And the safety stuff, we try and take very, very seriously and do as quickly as possible. But the cosmetic stuff, really? Can we address that and take a look at it and actually spend the money and invite the people and the investors to actually do the improvements as opposed to punishing them for not making it quite as pretty as we need?
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Well, Ms. Strickland can have the rest of my time if she'd like. I think she's on the, hitting the nail on the head.
Unfortunately, we can't do that, but thank you.
Are there any other comments?
That is the final speaker that we, we had signed up.
Is there anyone else in the room who has, maybe didn't sign up but would now like Hello, Mr. Palmer, if you don't mind identifying yourself and giving your address.
You didn't ask anybody else their address?
They had all signed up, so their address is part of the public record.
Okay. John Palmer, 8571 Lowell. I'm here tonight to ask this council to put the brakes on the comp plan. We need to really reevaluate this, get the true numbers. I believe we, we discussed this in length two weeks ago. The plan doesn't reflect the latest census numbers, so I don't believe that the, the figures that the city's using could possibly be accurate without accurate census information. There's a lot of other variables in there, but I think we need to hit the brakes, get some new eyes on it, a new city manager, a new police chief, get their input on going forward what the city needs to be. Possibly some new counselors, possibly a new mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to have comments tonight? Please come forward, Mr. Shea. And please give your, your address for the record as well.
I live at 3801 West 76th Avenue in the original part of Westminster. Been there all my life, well, the original part of Westminster. Good evening, Mayor Sights and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm speaking in regards to Agenda Item 10A and Resolution Number 42, where you will acknowledge the receipt, but you'll actually pass a resolution to acknowledge the receipt of the Harris Park Plan. My experience differs a little bit from the other neighbors and business owners that have spoken a little bit earlier than, than I have. Let me start with what I've handed you here. Well, you may back up even a little bit more. I received an email 21st of September in regards to the Harris Park Plan where it was going to be presented to the Planning Commission and also to you, and here was where the confusion started. Additionally, the plan will be brought before the city council in their consideration for approval. Everything that I've read tonight, you have nothing to approve, you have nothing to adopt, you have nothing to upset, accept. All you have to do is acknowledge that you've received the report. It has no governing rules or no requirements for our area. What I've given you is a sheet of paper here that I put together, and it's things that I've compiled since 1987. I went and spoke at the Planning Commission meeting, and I presented this to them, handed this to the clerk, and it was distributed. Oddly enough, it was not included in the minutes packet. And in fact, I spoke for five minutes. My comments were summarized in four sentences here in their minutes here, and in fact, one of the sentences is a staff rebuttal to my comments. So that's a little concerning there. Anyway, what I had given them those was this list that I've compiled. I know these surveys are, and studies and plans are out there. I have a number of them. I'm, I'm having a difficult time trying to find access to them or acquiring copies from the city. 1987, well, these are South Westminster surveys, plans, and studies from 1987 to present. 1987, a blight survey of South Westminster. That was where we were first branded as South Westminster. 1992, five years later, another blight survey of South Westminster. 1992, they started a South Westminster Urban Renewal Plan. In 1996, they revised the South Westminster Urban Renewal Plan, and then again in 2006, they revised it. That's a 72-page report. 2001, South Westminster Strategic Revitalization, Revitalization Plan. 2002, North Gate Redevelopment Area Blight Study. 2007, Design Framework Plan for the Harris Park Neighborhood. This is the same company in 2007 that has done the current Harris Park Area Plan. 2020, they began the Harris Park Area Plan. That was the original name. And then in 2020, in between that, we've been complaining about the parking needs down in, in the original part of Westminster, and so they, they commissioned a parking study. I'm not sure, I believe it was about $60,000 for that. So the study was done in July of 2020. That was, I believe, the height of the stay-at-home order. And they persisted with completing the study, studied the area, the parking needs down there. What they came up with is that at this time, there is adequate parking needs for South Westminster at the middle of the stay-at-home order. Then in 2021, then we finally completed through this long process here, the Harris Park Area Plan, was, which was then oddly enough changed to the Harris Park Community Vision Plan. So I've participated, I was a part of the original focus group, participated in each and every one of the meetings. The first strategic or the planning session that they had was at The Grange, and I think all of you attended that. There was probably over 100 people there. 90% of those people I did not recognize as South Westminster residents or South, or South Westminster business people. 90% of those people were from out of the area, yet they were doing the cut-and-paste exercise and placing, just like the gentleman from Electric City, placing buildings on his property, saying, this is what our vision is for you, for your community. When I hear the word vision now from somebody that isn't from the original part of Westminster, I cringe because what they're telling me is they don't like the way that my community looks. And in fact, at that same meeting there at The Grange, I was walking by the tables and just, and just observing what was going on, and I heard a woman, a woman at one of the front tables there, and she said, we should just scrape it and start over. Just devastating to hear something like that. So the process continued. They continued to have meetings. The numbers dwindled at each one of them, whether there was disenfranchisement or just disillusion with the process there. Then, and we started the Zoom meetings under Zoom.
Mr. Shea, I'm sorry, you've run out of time. Are there any other members of the audience that would like to speak? Anyone else? So please come forward. Seeing none, this will close public comment.
Uh, Mayor, there are three voicemails.
I'm sorry. Close the, this portion of public comment. Will we please go to the voicemails?
Mayor Sights, Mayor Pro Tem Demont, and the Honorable City Council, this is Karen Fox Elwell, the President and CEO of Growing Home. I'm speaking today in support of the Harris Park Community Vision Plan. As many of you know, Growing Home is located on 72nd Avenue within the greater Harris Park neighborhood, and we are a nonprofit organization that works in partnership with our community to advance equity in food, housing, parenting education, and lifelong stability to create lasting change for the future. An active group of participants and Westminster residents involved with Growing Home has been working in partnership with the City of Westminster on a number of projects over the past few years as a part of the West Deepwater GOCO initiative. Many of these leaders participated in the community workshops for the creation of this plan. I wanted to speak today to express mine and Growing Home's support of the inclusion of these residents who are primarily monylegal Spanish-speaking community members in this process by providing interpretation. By doing so, the city demonstrated its commitment to being inclusive in its planning processes. Regarding the plan itself, I would also like to express Growing Home's support of the plan's focus on embracing the diverse community located in and around Harris Park, as this is essential to the city's future. Lastly, I want to emphasize the importance of the plan's alignment with the comprehensive plan's focus on community health and resilience. Growing Home looks forward to continuing to work with the city towards creating a more thriving, healthy, and equitable community for all, and we believe that the planning process and the plan are good steps forward in this direction. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Yes, this is James Travis. During the candidate forum last week, several individuals running for office stressed the importance of listening to the people. The comprehensive plan specifically relating to what's been named Westminster Heights Transition Area seems to ignore many citizens' concerns, especially for over 10,000 people petitioning against development in this area. I have been a resident of Westminster for nearly 25 years. I would like to see a continuation of the adopted vision statement of safe neighborhoods and beautiful open space, which attracted me and many others to live here and call it home. In the 2040 Comp Plan, Pages 42 and 43, Westminster Heights Transition Area is not in alignment with great neighborhoods and managed growth. And I'm opposed, including this proposed high-density development in the comprehensive plan. Although there are many reasons for this opposition from many residents besides me, I would like to point out a couple things. I cannot imagine that managed growth in harmony with existing neighborhoods is possible by the addition of potentially 7,000 people in five-story buildings. What happens to the dramatic views that you mentioned in the packet? Is this the same city of Westminster that values open space that is now seeking to destroy it? Can you really have that many people without infrastructure and approved water plan, schools, public safety, and other services needed? It is inevitable that crime would increase, great neighborhoods, healthy places. Now to address traffic and congestion, here's a quote from the plan. Convenient access along Federal Boulevard connects this transition area to US 36. This is not true whatsoever. Traffic is taxed to the limit at the present time, as it is. Not to mention if you were to add 7,000 people. I want to relate a personal experience. A few weeks ago, I was coming home around 5:00 PM and took US Exit to northbound Federal with the intent of turning left to go west on 84th Avenue. There are three lanes on Federal. In spite of having many blocks to do so, navigating through traffic on Federal was a great peril to me as I was trying to switch lanes safely from the far right to the far left. No one was allowing me to get over to the left lane. It was very congested, and although I did finally manage to get over, I was quite rattled and stressed at the difficulty. Please do not give the green light to a city comp plan that does not fit with the vision of a beautiful city with beautiful neighborhoods. Please continue to work on the 2040 Plan to include the will of the people and exclude these pages which are developers' vision that has not been approved. Thank you. Again, my name is James Travis.
Good morning. My name is Lucy Seber. I live at 5408 West 100th Court. And I'm leaving some testimony regarding the 2040 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. I realize the city personnel have spent hundreds, if not thousands, of hours developing the what of the comp plan under review. However, I have some questions as to why certain elements are included or excluded. Water. Why does the city believe that, quote, "If we conserve this limited resource, we can add thousands of additional residents"? One cannot "if" one weighs out of a mega drought. I came across an article in the Western Planner Journal of May 8, 2020, by Andrew Spurgeon. You may know him. The article is entitled "Integrating Water and Land Use Planning in Colorado." Mr. Spurgeon states that the City of Westminster has seen new patterns of development in contrast to the traditional-style single-family development. Although compact development results in less outdoor usage, indoor usage may increase when calculated on a per-acre basis. Really? Water Supply Plan. The study states that, quote, "Climate change is not a major driver of the ultimate water needs," end quote. Why is no evidence given to support this statement? It exhibits quite a cavalier attitude. Westminster Highlands. Why has 6,000 to 7,000 more residents when our current infrastructure is burdened? You are adding a city the size of Gunnison, Colorado into our midst. Additionally, the parcel has a majestic core which can never be replaced. Why should this land be developed? Forget the slogan, quote, "Development pays its own way," end quote. We all know that isn't true. We do know that a development of this magnitude will negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood. I received an email marketing piece from the wannabe developer of this property. It claims that if built out, it would add tens of millions of dollars of infrastructure to this area. Oh, really? If this developer has its way, it will implement several metro tax districts. The homeowners will be burdened by extra layers of tax and will have no voice in the matter. Open Space. Where in the City Planning Guidebook does it state that every inch of available space must be built upon? Why? Our city code allows for 12 acres of open space per 1,000 residents. It's 20 acres per thousand in Broomfield. Why has this become a negotiating tool for developers? And if they pay cash in lieu of public land dedication, can the city provide tangible evidence of where the money is going? And the frequently asked question section of public land dedication has been modified to include such municipal additions as fire stations, libraries, and utilities. Why? This most certainly defeats the intention of the article in the current city code. Remember this? On October 16, 2019, the Westminster Window published the top three priorities of some then-city council candidates. Handle growth to minimize negative impacts to residents. Sustainability, controlled and quality growth in transportation. Approved development in a responsible way so that unchecked growth doesn't fall on the pockets of residents. Water rate increases being one. If a city council made this statement, I believe they should ask themselves why they haven't followed their public sentiment. That being said, please remember that the verbiage "urban corridor" was deleted from the city's vision statement based on feedback from the 2020 community survey. Why do I see more of the urban wannabe landscape? Finally, why is the city council voting on this plan? Next week, there may be some new faces on the council, not wishing anyone ill will, but a fresh and synergistic viewpoint is needed. Why not? Thanks for the opportunity to voice my opinion.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and councilors. First, let me thank all the speakers, both in person and who recorded voicemails for us tonight. We really do listen to those comments and appreciate them, and we will go through those after this meeting to make sure we haven't missed anything that you spoke about and gave us input on. Thank you very much. We really do appreciate you taking that tonight. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and councilors, just a few comments. I know we have a very full agenda tonight, so I'll be limiting my comments to two important initiatives that are before you this evening. The first, which many of our speakers spoke on tonight, is the first reading of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And the second item I'll provide brief comments on is the Harris Park Vision Plan, which we also heard many speakers speak to us about tonight. With regards to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, on behalf of staff, I would like to thank City Council for the opportunity to continue discussing the plan tonight. We heard a lot of great questions from City Council two weeks ago, and many raised by our speakers then and tonight as well. And the agenda memo in tonight's packet has been updated to provide additional information on those questions. In particular, there's information on the Water Supply Plan, on the level of stakeholder engagement, and on how the 2040 Plan reduces the projected population for the city. For clarity, on that point, the 2040 Plan will lower the density in the city by nearly 400 dwelling units, decreasing the projected population to 127,524,000 from the current plan, which is in place today, which would have the population be 129,400. So before you is a reduction of density and population. If the water conservation trends and infrastructure investments continue as they have been, the Water Supply Plan is aligned with the 2040 Plan and will be able to support Westminster's future needs. While the 2013 Plan that's in place today met best practices nearly a decade ago, we believe the 2040 Plan makes significant strides to address concerns around density and development that align with the values of our city and the recently completed Sustainability Plan, as well as the Water Supply Plan. Finally, it's important to note that the City Council will continue to have the ability to address each development project brought before it for compliance with the Comprehensive Plan, and will continue to have approval authority over each project brought forward. Regarding the Harris Park Vision Plan, staff recognizes and appreciates the importance of community engagement in all aspects of our work. Tonight, we're also bringing forward the Harris Park Vision Plan and another exemplary model of engaging our community will be before you tonight. We've heard many of the speakers speak about the level of engagement during that planning process. From residents to business owners to elected officials, the city created as many opportunities as possible for stakeholders in the community to engage and inform the vision for Harris Park Plan. City staff, notably Senior Planner Nathan Lawrence and Business Development Manager Stephanie Troller, have been involved in the vision planning process for Harris Park and are with us tonight to present the plan on behalf of the Harris Park community and address any questions on this important effort. With that, I'll close my city manager's remarks for this evening, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Acting City Manager Andreas. The next item before us are city council comments. Do any of my colleagues have anything to report? First in line is Mayor Protem Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody who showed up tonight. I think that this is actually really nice to see everybody. It's been a while since I've seen this room this full, and it wasn't just staff. So I appreciate everybody coming out and sharing your point of view on all the important topics facing the city. With that said, I also wanted to share that I had the pleasure of joining most of council to celebrate our police officer and award ceremony that happened last week. The stories that we hear of the things that our police officers do in order to keep everyone they come in contact with safe is extraordinary. You should all be very, very pleased with the police that you have in the city. So I just wanted to take time and again, recognize them for the job they do, both those that won awards and those who didn't win awards that I know go out and do the same job every day and risk their own livelihood. We pray that they all get to continue to return to their families, and I would encourage you to each pray for them as well.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank everyone who came out tonight to share their voices with our council. Sharing your voice in a public comment is one of the greatest things you can do in this country. Speak to your councilors directly and ask them questions. We don't always get to respond, but we do listen, and I appreciate that. I also attended the police award ceremony last week, and the stories were just, they were just, they were amazing. We have such heroes in our city, in our fire department, our public works department, and our police department. And we are so grateful for your service. We know you put your lives on the line every single day, and it's a hard job, and we just appreciate it. So thank you. And then finally, I have asked my fellow councilors now twice if we could consider hearing from Save Our Skies. It's an organization, a grassroots residential organization, that would like to have permission to come forward and speak to our council about their concerns about the airport and the noise of that airport in their neighborhood. I have heard only from a couple of councilors, and it has been a resounding note. I am begging you, I am pleading with you, please consider this. There is precedent. We have done this in the past. I would like to see this action carried out. We have residents who are concerned about where they live and the impact of the noise of the airport. We need to hear from them. We've heard from the airport, we've heard from Jefferson County. And now I would like us to also hear from our residents in a special study session where they have an opportunity to really speak to us directly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Scully. Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to step out of bounds a little bit and address a staff issue. And this is, it's come up in a couple different forums. And I'm sure if I'm out of bounds, my fellow councilors will correct me on this. But it was brought to our attention that there were some concerns about our new interim city clerk. And I want to say personally that Ms. Fitch is of outstanding character and does a great deal of hard work preparing for these council meetings and in other duties in the city clerk's office. So I want to personally say that I respect her greatly. Even though we are a city of 113,000 people, we are still like a small town where everybody knows everybody and everyone knows everyone's business. And just because someone's spouse is helping someone that's on council run, it shouldn't separate the fact that a person of good character can still fill that.
Thank you, Counselor Seymour. Mayor Protem Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Seymour, for your comments. I just wanted to pile on and say that I think Ms. Fitch, since you've joined the team before you were in this role, I think this whole council values what you do, and I think it's unfortunate. I will tell the public, those of us who are elected, we step into this, and we're no stranger to having mud thrown at us. That's what we stepped into, and it's part of the job. However, folks that do a job such as Ms. Fitch, I think that's out of bounds, and I would appreciate that people lay off, quite frankly. And we just wanted to say that we appreciate the job that you do.
I just, I see your light, Counselor Vols. I do want to say thank you to both of my colleagues for stepping in and making those comments as the subject that was involved with those accusations. I can, I just want to provide further clarity that maybe my colleagues don't even realize. No one's spouse is my campaign manager. That is just an untrue allegation that's being spread, but it's really irrelevant because interim city clerk Fitch is a woman of high character and integrity. I just wanted to pile on here. Counselor Vols.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I want to also join in. I was going to make the same comments. And councilors already have, so thank you for saying what you did. I agree, and thank you for your hard work on our behalf. Thank you. We also have on our, so first, I want to thank everyone who spoke tonight. It's wonderful to hear from so many people on so many different issues, and it lets us know what you're thinking, what's going on in our community. It helps us so much. So thank you very much for being here tonight and being part of this discussion. I also want to thank Acting Deputy City, or Acting City Manager Judy Andrews for stepping into this role. It's a lot of extra duties, and it's on our agenda tonight. We're going to be looking at a contract. But thank you for your hard work and stepping in and hitting the ground running. I appreciate it a lot. Our city attorney, we're also looking at the contract there. He does so much good work, keeps us out of trouble so much. So thank you all for all of your hard work. Again, thank you all for being here tonight and sharing your thoughts. It's very appreciated by this council, and we like to hear from all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Vols. I'm going to do very brief comments, update on what we worked on last week, but I would be remiss if I didn't say this was really a wonderful meeting for us as city council. Even when we're getting hard feedback, we love to hear directly from residents. And there were some themes I heard. There was a lot of themes about concerns about safety in historic Westminster and in the surrounding areas, desire to, some appreciation for the Harris Park Plan, some concerns about the Harris Park Plan. But I really just, I want to say we do weigh this information heavily, and we appreciate you coming out here. I also just, you know, want to address, there have been some comments in regards to whether or not the city council hears you. And I will tell you that we work really hard on hearing our residents. We've recognized that there was geographic equity issues with parklands, which is why we've invested, you know, millions of dollars and worked with partners to build the nature park. It's why we invested in our TOD and invested in the Harris Park Plan. And I do recognize that there was a blight designation, but that was far before this council ever took office. There is a deep commitment that has persisted since I've been on council. took office. There is a deep commitment that has persisted since I've been on council to try to make sure that everyone in the community feels heard, welcomed, and represented. And that will continue, I know, with whoever is in this seat, because I think people are driven, driven to serve. I do want to give a quick update on what I did last week, because there was some really exciting stuff that has big impacts on Westminster. On Wednesday, I attended the Denver Regional Council of Governments meeting. There was a presentation on the complete streets toolkit. This is a toolkit that local governments can use to try to make sure they're using best practices on complete streets. So that is working on, on safety, making sure we have good crossings, good access, that we're designing not just for the automobile, but for everybody who uses the roads. We also had a fascinating report. It was the annual congestion report. So some of the conversations, we heard about congestion on federal, it was really looking at different corridors and what does congestion look like in the state. And it was particularly interesting looking at it during the pandemic and how quickly it's rebounded and where it hasn't. It's very regional. Then we had a tip policy update, and they're looking at how they're going to allocate tip dollars in this next process. And there was some concern, because right now, those dollars are allocated by the subregions, which is really important, because they know the needs of their kind of local area. But, you know, all of the metro area is not homogeneous. So making sure that we have overall planning, but that the regions have their say, because they know what their, their community members need. And then finally, we had a presentation on front range passenger rail. And there's a lot of momentum with that going forward. So that was a great presentation. If anyone's interested, this agenda and all of the materials are available on Dr. Cog's website. I also had a meeting Thursday morning with the Mile High Flood District Board. It was a great meeting, went through who's going to be on the nominating committee and looked at various projects. CC4CA, that is Colorado Communities for Climate Action, I'm on the board, and Counselor Smith serves on the policy committee. We had a two-day board retreat. It's really exciting to see how local governments want to come together to further climate action at the state and federal level. I also had a North Area Transit Alliance Strategic Planning Meeting. I was not able to attend that because of my board retreat for CC4CA, but I did get notes, and I am slated to serve as vice chair for that going forward. I'm currently the treasurer. And then today, I had a really wonderful meeting with regional, the Regional Transportation District, RTD, giving them a tour of our downtown site and kind of looking at how do we maximize transportation and transit opportunities to that site. As you probably know, their new executive director, Deborah Johnson, is just nearing her first year on the job. She's enthusiastic to, about the benefits and the transformational power of transit, but she has a hard road ahead of her. And so she's looking to meet with local governments to see how we can partner, and that was a wonderful meeting. Thank you all so much for coming out and for listening to us. Before we go on to the next item, and I know there is a family here that has waited and waited, and we're so excited, but I have gotten multiple requests for a bio-break. So we're going to just take a quick five-minute break and come back. The next item before us are appointments and resignations. And I get a motion on item A1. The consent agenda is a group of routine matters to be acted on with a single motion and vote. Counsel, at this time, does any member wish to remove an item from this, for separate discussion? Seeing none at this time, I will take a motion to consider the consent agenda. Counselor Smith?
Thank you. I move to adopt the consent agenda, item 8A through 8G.
Counselor Vols?
I second the motion.
There has been a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote.
Mayor Protem Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
And Counselor Vols?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote.
The next item before us are appointments and resignations. And I get a motion on item A1. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to appoint Rebecca Watata as Associate Municipal Court Judge.
Counselor Scully?
I second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Welcome. This is a roll call vote.
Mayor Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demont?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote.
I would now ask Judge Montine, presiding municipal court judge, if he will come and swear into office Rebecca Watata, the newly selected Associate Municipal Court Judge. Judge Watata, can you please bring your family forward? Just come right on in. And please feel free to introduce your family after your sworn in.
If you please raise your hand. I, Rebecca Watata.
I, Rebecca Watata.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
And city charter.
And city charter.
Of the city of Westminster.
Of the city of Westminster.
And faithfully perform the duties of.
And faithfully perform the duties of.
Associate Municipal Court Judge.
Associate Municipal Court Judge.
Upon which I'm about to.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of City Council, it's really a great honor to be here tonight with now Judge Watata, and to welcome her as the new Associate Municipal Court Judge. As you know, over the past several months, we've been engaged in a pretty rigorous recruitment process for this role, because it is such a fundamental piece of the city's governance. Throughout the entire process, Rebecca, Judge Watata, really rose to the top. And it wasn't just her qualifications, which are impeccable. She has experience as a deputy district attorney, a senior deputy district attorney, as a civil litigator. She's involved in the Women's Bar Association, many other volunteer organizations in the community. But it was also her qualities as a person that really are what this city is looking for and deserves, frankly, in its associate judge. She'll bring balance and understanding of how to weigh the challenges of each case, the balance between rehabilitation and punishment. She'll bring leadership from her roles, again, on the women's bar as a mentor to law students and her fellow prosecutors. And I think she'll also bring a strong sense of the spirit values to the role. That was apparent through every aspect of her interview. And as someone in the associate role, really, who is such a strong ambassador for the city, I think it's noteworthy to really comment just on how universally she impressed all the different stakeholders that were involved in the process. We had representatives from the police department, the defense bar, the judiciary, the court, as well as many other departments within the city. And universally, they all believed wholeheartedly in Judge Watata, that she was someone that would uphold the values of this city to the highest regard, and that everyone who appears in front of her is going to know that they'll be heard and treated fairly, which is so fundamental to our court and the legitimacy of our criminal justice system. So again, I am so thankful to council for your approval this evening and for the opportunity to work with Judge Watata going forward. Thank you.
Judge Watata, would you like to introduce your family and say a few words?
Sure. Good evening. Thank you all so very much. I got choked up just hearing the motion and got so nervous. But, so yes, I have my husband Jeremy Watata here, my son Maxwell Watata, who's 14, a freshman in high school, and then my 11-year-old Sam Watata, who is a sixth grader in, and middle school. So that is my family. And I just, and I also have my mother-in-law, my father-in-law, my sister-in-law, and Ava and Cash, my niece and nephew that are also here. I have my shareholders that are at my firm that I'm currently with here, paralegal, and I'm just, I feel, and a dear friend of mine who's on the bench in Denver and has been a friend for over a decade. And I just am so honored to have this privilege. I enjoyed the process, even though it was extremely rigorous. I enjoyed the process so thoroughly, because I truly could tell that everybody involved in this city is dedicated to those city values, to the spirit values. And it just felt very natural, and it was just my, it felt like I was home. So, I just appreciate it so very much, and I thank you all for everything.
Thank you so much, Judge Watata. I think we need to get some pictures of this. Thank you. So, the next items before us are public hearings and other new business. First item is item 10A, resolution number 42. Do I have a motion? Counselor Vols.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number 42, acknowledging receipt of the Harris Park Community Vision Plan.
Can I get a second? Counselor Scully.
A second.
There has been a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Counselor Smith. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And while, as I was pointing out, we're just accepting this plan, I hope that we continue to work with our residents in Harris Park and continue a vision that meets their needs as well as the communities. I think we have a great deal of opportunity and passion in the Harris Park community, and igniting that passion is what's going to move us forward. No set of paper, no set of plans, but follow-up and follow-through. So, thank you.
Counselor Smith.
Thank you. My one question with the plan is, why are we only acknowledging receipt of this? Is that, I don't recall that being a normal thing, how we just acknowledge receipt instead of formally adopt.
City Manager Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, thank you for the question, Counselor Smith. I don't know if the city attorney would like to add to this. There is a judgment call when bringing plans of this nature forward. One of the tests that we look for is whether there's a regulatory element in the plan, as in something prescriptive that would have to be followed in law, for example, through building permits or zoning and such. And that is not the case with this plan. This is a vision plan, stakeholder-built. So, council can receive the plan, it becomes part of the public record, and we'd follow it. Because it doesn't have a regulatory element, that's typically why we wouldn't seek counsel to approve it. A recent plan where council did approve it was the Transportation and Mobility Plan, and that did have an element in it around the regulatory nature as well as around the funding nature, needing to seek funding with other agencies. Adopted plan, some agencies seek. So, long answer, I hope that helps answer the thinking behind receiving it versus adopting it. Now, City Council could, I think, choose as a body to do something different with it tonight, if it chose, but this is the starting point for the recommendations to receive.
Thank you.
Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I have a question. Is this, so, it's a vision plan. We're receiving it. Is it, can it be amended? Can it be changed? And what would that process look like?
Yes, thank you for the question, Counselor Scully. I could also ask staff, we have staff here tonight to get into what the process might look like moving forward. I think, like many of our community engagement plans, we would view it as a living document moving forward, and always be open to input and engagement, particularly as we look at some of the elements that would really benefit from that. So, I would think that it can get modified and updated as we progress with the work and gain more input and have more engagement with people in the community.
Okay.
Counselor Smith, do you have another question?
Yes, thank you. Last minute that was brought forward to us, or have any of these plans that Mr. Shea spoke of, have they been formally adopted in the past?
Dave Downing, Director of Community Development, thanks for the question, Counselor. I'd like to call on Nathan Lawrence. Is he in the audience? Nathan, Nathan and I spoke a little bit this afternoon about the number of plans that Mr. Shea mentioned, and I'd like to make some comments on what those plans consist of. We may not know the answer about all of them, whether they were all adopted by council, but I think it would be valuable feedback for council to hear some of the nature of the plans that were mentioned earlier. Nathan, if you would, please.
I'll let Nathan speak to the details. This is Peter Spurgeon, Long Range Planner in Community Development. A number of those plans aren't actually city plans, so those wouldn't have been adopted. But some of those plans, the urban renewal plans, those are, in fact, a very specific function of city council when you convene as the Urban Renewal Authority, and there's funding elements associated with those. Some of these plans are Adams County, or they were private plans. The parking study wasn't something that required adoption. I think that pretty much covers that list. The previous Winters and Company plan, that plan never moved forward, so it was not brought to City Council. It would have been in the same format as what you have before you tonight if it had come forward. Did I cover the whole list?
Yeah. The vision plan, or the area plan was renamed to the Harris Park Community Vision Plan, but that was really just a naming convention. We thought it better represented, and with focus group input, better represented what they wanted to actually call it. So, we didn't change it. There was no sort of ulterior motive.
And do we feel that with the parking study that was conducted in July 2020, do we feel that that's ample evidence for parking with or without a pandemic in the area?
I'll let Stephanie Troller, who headed up that project, speak to that question. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Counsel, thank you. Stephanie Troller, Business Development Manager. I commissioned the parking study as a request from the community, as they were, at the time when the old Westminster Pub, the project was moving forward, and it was, it really focused specifically on 73rd. And they used data. It was during the pandemic, however, they did car counts and did inventory counts, and they based that on our current parking ratios and felt that there was enough parking along 73rd to accommodate at peak hours during the pub and other development that was proposed at the time.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
One more question. Are there any other questions from council? Mayor Protem.
Want to follow up on the answer about the former plan for the Winter and Company, or the Winter and Company did. Why, you said it did move forward. What happened with that plan? What do you mean it did move forward?
It's a little hard to say because we didn't work for the city at the time. My understanding was that was going into 2008 with the economic recession that was going on, and the department moved to higher priorities based on the economic needs at the time.
That makes sense. I guess my concern, and I know that you weren't necessarily here, but I mean, just in general running, I think I've brought this point up before when we talked about this. As far as I don't want another plan, that's another stack of paper that we've spent money on, that goes nowhere. And I don't say that to eschmerge any of the work that's done now, but I think that's been the frustration that I've heard. And so, I guess that's two, like with accepting versus adopting. I think there's a lot of good stuff in here, and then there's some stuff that probably could use more input. So, I mean, that's part of the reason why I asked. And I don't really know the right answer to it, but it's just concerning to me, because I have seen some of those plans. I remember actually looking over them when I first ran at 13, and the, you know, then I could see the question from the community about, you know, hiring the same group. Like, did we pick up some of the work that they did back in 2007, and did they reuse it? I mean, could you speak to that?
Sure. That was actually, that was the thinking. This firm had familiarity with the area. There was some, if you look at the old document, there's some content that seemed to still be valid today, even though a number of years has passed. So, it was thought we'd be gaining some efficiencies by working with this group. And also, working with the Winter and Company, which I've worked on in other cities, facilitation is kind of their strong suit. Ultimately, the document is finished off by staff. But facilitation is one of their strong suits, and we thought that was a reason. In terms of the plan not being regulatory, some of the prior city councils had actually talked about a specific plan for the Harris Park area. Specific plan is a regulatory plan. It is a zoning document, and it actually would take the area out of the conventional PUD, PDP system we have, where you have negotiated development, and it's very fixed. Our sense was this community was not quite ready for a rigid zoning document, and that we needed to try to get people onto the same page through a shared community vision. So, this is really the first step. Zoning for the area is an implementation item recommended in the plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
Great. That's helpful. I guess the last couple of questions I have. So, and I did attend that meeting where there were a hundred or so people down at the Grange. I mean, I would say that there's a fair amount from the community, but there were a fair amount that I also didn't recognize. And there were some I did recognize that I know weren't from the community. Like, and that doesn't necessarily mean that we don't want their input. But I mean, as a planning practice, how do you weigh that to assure that, you know, we're more heavily weighting the community who's actually impacted in the plan?
Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah.
Focus group?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a great question. So, you know, as we know, we're not writing down addresses or kicking people out of things. We do value a wide range of info from people who just shop in the area, who like to go to its parks and open spaces, people who are looking to invest in the area. Those are all perspectives that I think you would agree are very valuable. The main intent of us creating a focus group was to, of local business owners and residents and nonprofit leaders, was to really, to make sure that all the input that we got from the larger community in these meetings was sort of focused, and they were able to basically take a look at everything that was inputted and make sure that it was, in fact, on the right course, in order to ensure that there was any, you know, sort of errant issues that were sort of, that were brought in. So, the focus group was able to look at the plan, I think, three or four times, and there were no real large issues that were ever sort of brought up throughout it. So, I think it really does represent the sort of voice of that community, as we've heard tonight. And I think that that was the main role of the focus group.
Okay. And then I guess one last question, and this is just more of a forward-thinking, trying to understand how the taxpayers' money gets benefit from this plan. I mean, the money's kind of already spent, but, you know, we, as a city, are looking at having new leadership at some point soon, potentially new. I mean, there's going to definitely be some members of council that are different. So, how does this plan in practice actually move past two weeks from now? Make sure that, you know, it actually goes somewhere and it's not just another plan in the drawer, because I think that's one of the things I want to make sure that we're setting ourselves up to avoid.
Right, right. Yeah, I think we've already begun implementation on it, even though it's not really quite, quite finished. We have a bunch of projects that we already started to implement using existing dollars, and we've started to plan, and was included in our 2022 budget items. So, we already are moving on some items. For instance, the 72nd Avenue Corridor Study is a really big one, probably the number one thing that came out of our outreach efforts. So, we have those items. Going forward, really, I think the main power of this plan is it forms one sort of, sort of a foundation in an area that really has had a lot of challenges, kind of understanding what that one voice is. And again, everyone's not going to completely agree with everything in it, you know, how that works. And so, I think, but what it does do is it sets up a document that we can point to, that when we come back to you all, or whoever is sitting here, and ask for funding for projects, we can sort of point to this document and identify items and say, this is what the Harris Park community identified as what they wanted. And we can bring that back and ask for those funds or to implement various programming.
Okay, great. And the last thing, and this is just a point of something that I think we can learn from moving forward. I think it's pretty powerful when people talk about their business or their property, and they see it as something else. So, and I know you guys were the ones who did the rendering. It was the consultant, but wherever we could say, how can we modify this with existing business and make it look pretty around them? And I think that we would probably get more buy-in than, hey, look, that's where my building used to be in this rendering. So, you know, that's just something that maybe we think about moving forward as we do these in the future. But I appreciate all the work on this and you answering all my questions.
Thank you. I have a question. Being part of the council that actually put in the strategic plan that we wanted a Harris Park specific plan, part of the reason we had asked for a specific plan was for the very regulatory nature of it. So, as government, we typically have carrots and we have sticks. And my concern is with expectation management. Having this as a non-regulatory document, and I'd like to hear, I mean, I really appreciate you answering part of that question. It kind of helps direct how we invest city dollars. But how are we going to promote and incentivize the right type of private investment that matches what the community has told us they want? Because otherwise, it feels like just a wish list.
Mayor, thank you for the question. And staff may wish to add to my response. I think when staff got into the community on this effort and started to engage and talk to the stakeholders and the local residents, as stated just a bit earlier, decided that the better approach to start with would be more of a vision plan than moving directly into a regulatory document that would be what an area-specific plan would be. And so, really, a building block plan to move forward from here with the community and with stakeholders. And so, really realizing that we needed to take a step at a more foundational level in this community to really get to the engagement and such. It does set out a lot of really good foundational vision for the neighborhood, and I think Mr. Lawrence can speak to some of those elements, one of them being already funded, the 72nd Avenue Corridor. And I do think we have positive traction with the existing residents and businesses in terms of what that would look like for continuing to invest in their own community, but also drawing like-minded interests that would augment this vision by investing in the community. So, really, a starting block, a starting point for all of those relationships moving forward with anyone new, and hopefully building on existing relationships with those folks who stayed with us through these processes, and all the other agencies that have been engaging in this area over the years, as Mr. Shea has summarized for us. So, I hope that helps answer. I don't know if Mr. Lawrence would have added anything to that.
No, I think that's really great, Jody. The only thing that I would add is, even though there's no sort of teeth to it, right now, the whole area is governed by the T-Mund Comp Plan designation, which frankly has a lot of sort of gray area in it. It's been a challenge in the past, when we've had projects come in that I've worked with. You know, they'll come in and say, well, you know, we have these wide, you know, sort of regs here, but what does the community want? What do they want to see here? You know, what will they support, right? Because they'll ultimately be coming back to you to get approval for any PUD. So, I think this gives some certainty. At least, it's a document that we can point to, even if it's a sort of an aerial that might just show one future. It's good having something that you can point to and show pictures, and then understand that there's certain. understand that there's certain principles of, you know, how buildings want to be set towards the streets. And without having that really documented in T-Mund or anything like that, it really adds sort of a level of color to, to what those regs are and what the community would support and will, and hopefully will provide some certainty going forward. And as Jody said, there was a lot of sort of voices that we heard that we don't want more regulations. And so we thought that this, even though a specific plan might have, you know, more of the sort of stick, I guess, as, as you were saying, Mayor, didn't feel like, it felt like it might be taking a step too, too quickly. And we really had some sort of groundwork to lay here, and I think that we did a really good job of that. And we'll continue to sort of build on that relationship in the community.
So I appreciate that sensitivity to the qualitative nature of trying to rebuild community trust. I mean, looking at this detailed timeline, there's really only two of these processes that have occurred since the eight years that I've been on council. You know, the twenty, I would consider the twenty twenty and the twenty twenty-one Harris Park community vision plan to be one and the same. And, and the parking study, which was community requested. So I do understand that there is probably some planning fatigue from previous councils and, and fits and starts due to the recession and things maybe outside of people's control. So I appreciate that. But I would say, I hope the recommendation to have zoning that matches this vision is, I think that's going to be important because otherwise we have a dream and not a guarantee. So, but thank you very much for this and thank you for the work on it. Seeing no other comments or questions, this is a roll call vote. Councillor Seymour. Councillor Scully.
Yes.
Councillor Smith.
Yes.
Councillor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
And Mayor Saitz.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero roll call vote. The next item before us is item ten B, Resolution Number Forty-three. Can I get a motion? Councillor Seymour.
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution Number Forty-three, authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Westminster and the City of Arvada for exchange of maintenance services of public rights of way.
Councillor Smith.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Seeing none, this is also a roll call vote. Councillor Scully.
Yes.
Councillor Smith.
Yes.
Councillor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Mayor Saitz.
Yes.
And Councillor Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote. The next item before us is Resolution Number Forty-four. Can I get a motion? Councillor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number Forty-four to direct staff to utilize the full federal funding from the American Rescue Plan as backfill for revenue loss due to the economic impacts of COVID-nineteen.
Councillor Vols.
I second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Councillor Vols.
Yes, I'm, I'm looking through here and where the money will be allocated. It looks like the Human Services Board, I guess this is over three years, would get four hundred and fifty thousand dollars additionally, is that correct? To help our nonprofits and human service organizations within the city?
That is correct. Councillor Vols, that's an additional four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's good, okay. I'm glad to hear that. And then also, it looks like an additional four million dollars for street maintenance throughout our city?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's what I'll highlight, those two things that to me are very important. I'll be voting in favor of this tonight. Thank you.
So seeing no other comments or questions, I just want to take a moment to thank Mr. Lindsay and his team. And, and Mr. Dore, I believe, also participated in this. This was a lot of money and a lot of thought was put into how do we best serve the most amount of residents in the long term? And so these are going to be some transformative measures that really help lower the cost to the community over the long haul and are really, these are our federal tax dollars that are coming back into our community. We have a huge responsibility to make sure that we are spending them wisely. And I believe this team did just that. So thank you so much, Mr. Lindsay, for your efforts on this. See no other comments or questions, this is a roll call vote. Councillor Smith.
Yes.
Councillor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Mayor Saitz.
Yes.
Councillor Seymour.
Yes.
And Councillor Scully.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero roll call vote. Okay. That's one out. Councillor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Councillor's Bill Number Forty-two on first reading, amending the twenty twenty-one budget of the General Capital Improvement Fund and authorizing a supplemental appropriation from the twenty twenty-one estimated revenues in the fund.
Councillor Vols.
I second the motion.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Councillor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Mayor Saitz.
Yes.
Councillor Seymour.
Yes.
Councillor Scully.
Yes.
And Councillor Smith.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote. The next item before us is in regards to an intergovernmental cooperation agreement. Item D, can I, ten D, can I get a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the acting city manager to execute an intergovernmental cooperation agreement, ICA, in substantially the same format as attached, which allows Westminster Economic Development Authority, WIDA, to provide parking license agreement fees to the city.
Councillor Smith.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Councillor Smith. Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Mayor Saitz.
Yes.
Councillor Seymour.
Yes.
Councillor Scully.
Yes.
Councillor Smith.
Yes.
And Councillor Vols.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote. The next item before us is item ten E. Can I get a motion from the group? Councillor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move based on the recommendation of the acting city manager to determine that the public interest is best served by authorizing the city manager to execute an engineering services agreement with Allen Plumber and Associates, Inc., in the amount not to exceed three hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars for reclaimed water master plan.
Councillor Smith.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this? All right. Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Mayor Saitz.
Yes.
Councillor Seymour.
Yes.
Councillor Scully.
Yes.
Councillor Smith.
Yes.
Councillor Vols.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote. The next item before us is item ten F. Is there a motion? Councillor Smith.
I move based on the recommendation of the acting city manager to determine that the public interest will best be served by authorizing the city manager to execute a sole-source contract with Carlson, Hammond, and Peddick LLC for special water council legal services in the amounts not to exceed three hundred and twenty thousand annually for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four.
Councillor Seymour.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Councillor Seymour.
Yes.
Councillor Scully.
Yes.
Councillor Smith.
Yes.
Councillor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
And Mayor Saitz.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote. The next item before us is item ten G. Can I get a motion? Councillor Seymour doing the heavy lifting tonight.
I move based on the recommendation of the acting city manager to determine that the public interest will best be served by authorizing the city manager to execute, execute a sole-source contract with Ecological Resource Consultants, Inc., for water resources engineering services in the amount not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand dollars annually in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four.
And Councillor Smith.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Councillor Scully.
Yes.
Councillor Smith.
Yes.
Councillor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Mayor Saitz.
Yes.
And Councillor Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote. The next item before us is item ten H. Is there a motion for ten H? Councillor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move based on a recommendation of the acting city manager to determine the public interest will best be served by authorizing the city manager to execute a sole-source contract with Hydros Consulting, Inc., for water supply modeling in the amount not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand dollars in the year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four.
Councillor Vols.
I second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Councillors, oh, seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Councillor Smith.
Yes.
Councillor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Mayor Saitz.
Yes.
Councillor Seymour.
Yes.
And Councillor Scully.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote. The next item before us is item ten I. Is there a motion on item ten I? Councillor Vols.
I move based on the recommendation of the acting city manager to determine that the public interest would be best served by author, authorizing a sole-source contract with Converge One, Inc., for total authorized amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand dollars in annual expenses for years twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty
Councillor Smith.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Councillor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Mayor Saitz.
Yes.
Councillor Seymour.
Yes.
Councillor Scully.
Yes.
And Councillor Smith.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote. The next item before us is item ten J. Is there a motion? Councillor Vols.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Councillor Vols.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Is there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? I just want to say thank you to City Attorney Frankel for your work. This has been an incredibly busy and challenging year for everyone in local government, but your office took the brunt of it. Numerous public health orders, numerous contracts to review, and you really were up to the challenge. So on behalf of all of city council, I think, thank you for continuing to serve this community that we all love. Yes, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the kind words and I want to thank the team at the City Attorney's Office because no one person does all of the work that is necessary to make this possible. So it's through their support and this, my, my seventh year with the city, very much appreciate the team and everything that they've done to make this possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Frankel. I've joked with you a couple of times that I'm sick of living through history with you, but I also couldn't think of a better attorney and team to have behind us. So really appreciate the work that you've done in my time and over the last year.
And I think your humble reminder that we need to congratulate and thank your entire team just shows the type of leader that we have running our City Attorney's Office, and that's why it is such a high-functioning team. So thank you. No other comments or questions? Let's do the roll call vote. Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Mayor Saitz.
Yes.
Councillor Seymour.
Yes.
Councillor Scully.
Yes.
Councillor Smith.
Yes.
And Councillor Vols.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote. The next item before us is item ten K. Can I get a motion? And this, this one, I believe we have to make the motion based off of the email that we received today. And so I know if you're not prepared, Councillor Seymour had earlier said he would make the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the employment agreement for Jody Andrews as the interim city manager with a correction to paragraph six that was misstated. The correct wording is if Andrews is terminated from the interim city manager position and is not restored to the deputy city manager position, the city shall pay Andrews severance in the amount of twelve months of salary at the rate Andrews interim city manager salary then in effect.
And Councillor Demat.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. I see that there is a comment from our city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And if I could just clarify for the record, I believe the language that Councillor Seymour has quoted would be added into paragraph six in addition to the existing text that's in there. Just wanted that to be clear, that language I don't think was intended to replace paragraph six, but would be added in addition to.
That is correct. I will correct my motion to reflect as an addition.
Thank you. And as the second, Mayor Protem, do you agree to that?
Yep.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? City Attorney.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. I, I wanted to apologize for the error in the packet tonight on this item in that I had drafted this intending to capture the, the will of the parties involved and really to recognize that this is intended to reflect a short-term assignment for Mr. Andrews while the recruitment is underway for a permanent city manager. And this agreement is intended to go for six months as drafted. Of course, if the recruitment takes less than six months, it doesn't need to go beyond the, the term of the recruitment. But it's always been intended to, to secure Mr. Andrews' position that he could return to being a deputy city manager at the conclusion of this agreement. And I think paragraph six reflects that intent to ensure that he can return to being a deputy once the recruitment is concluded, should that be the, the direction the council decides to go.
Thank you so much. I see Mayor Protem, do you have additional comments?
I just want to take a moment to thank Mr. Andrews for stepping into this again. I mean, our nation, state, and city, there's been plenty of conflict to go around in the last eighteen months. And I do believe that there's oftentimes in life where you have the right person at the right time for the job and you're the right person to steady the ship when we decide what the future of the city is going to be. when we decide what the future of the city is going to be. So, I couldn't be more grateful for you being willing to step into this role. And I've already seen the benefit of the steady calm that you bring to the job. So, I appreciate the fact that you're willing to step into this role.
Counselor Seymour.
Hey, Madam Mayor. I too wish to thank Mr. Andrews. When council reached out to him, I don't believe there was much hesitation, I'm sure. But I appreciate the fact that he was willing to step up during this time. We all know it's a bit different, and the steady hand that we're looking for is exactly what we need. So, thank you.
And I'm just going to pile on for a moment. I think the community benefits from some stabilization right now. I have had the privilege of working with Mr. Andrews for almost eight years now. I have seen someone who is dedicated to public service, to making sure all voices are heard and respected, that he gives equal weight to every single member of council, and really is believes in being a true community steward. So, I think this is going to be an opportunity to try to move forward with our best foot forward and the best person to help serve us during this time of transition. So, I will be delighted to vote yes tonight.
Seeing no other comments, this is a roll call vote. Mayor Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demont.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
The next item before, or the next portion of our meeting is old business and passages of ordinances on second readings. The first item is Counselor's Bill Number 38. This is item 11A. Can I get a motion? Mayor Protem Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 38 on second reading, modifying Title IX, Chapter VIII of the Westminster Municipal Code concerning the infrastructure program for street light cost and concrete replacement.
Counselor Scully.
A second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any? I apologize. City Attorney Frankel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to call out, and I believe that Mr. Lindsay, Mr. Bellman, and Mr. Munch have all put their work in on this item. And I will do my best to call out that the reason it's not on consent tonight is that for second reading, there was an omitted bit of text, which was the effective date of the ordinance. It was intended to take effect on January 1 of 2022, and we didn't want to have a period where we were lapsed in between the old fee and the new fee. So, the old fee continues until the end of this year. The new fee then takes effect January 1 of '22. And I'm seeing some nods, and I wanted to be sure council understood that. Obviously, we publish the title on first reading, and we'll publish, if this passes tonight on second reading, we'll publish the ordinance in fall so that all of the text is included in the public motion. But I wanted to call out that one oversight, which was on the first reading, not included in the document. And I believe there is one other typographical error that was captured, which was in section 983, there was a residual reference to a fee in the amount of $3 per month. That should not have been included, as I think that's been out of date now for some time. So, we recommend that be stricken, and in its place, the improvement fee to appear on each utility bill would be the way it reads with that edit. So, I wanted to call those edits out to your attention.
We appreciate that. Thank you. Hearing that, are there any comments, questions? Mr. Vols or Counselor Vols?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to follow up, and maybe it was in the packet, and maybe I missed it. What did we end up doing with the affordable housing units? Is that, we did have some public testimony on that, and I just want to follow up. What are we, where are we headed with that?
Thank you, Counselor Vols. So, as I indicated at the last meeting, we're working with providers of not-for-profit, affordable, and workforce housing to provide some relief to the fee and allow that to take effect at a slightly slower rate.
Okay. So, you're working with them, just
That's correct.
Working through this. So, there are just not one big lump sum at the very beginning.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Lindsay. Appreciate that. I just want to follow up on that. I'll be voting yes on this. So, I just want to follow. That was my one question.
Any agreements to that effect we'll bring back for council's approval.
Oh, good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay. See none. This is a roll call vote.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demont.
Yes.
And Mayor Sights.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
The next item before us is Counselor's Bill Number 40. Can I get a motion on this? Mayor Protem Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 40 on second reading, implementing water sewer re-clean water rate adjustment for 2022 by amending sections 8-7-7, 8-8-5, and 8-12-7 of the Westminster Municipal Code effective January 1, 2022.
Counselor Seymour.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item?
Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I've really struggled with this particular item because this is basically a 0% increase, which, you know, I understand we don't want to burden our residents with further rates. However, every time we vote zero, it just means that we have to vote a higher rate the next time through. And that's, that's where we get into problems, when our residents really can't afford those increases. I've been a big proponent over time of a gradual step increase to meet the needs of inflation and costs. And by voting a 0% increase, we are, we are doing disjustice to our residents, and we're kicking a can down the road. So, I will be a no vote on this tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Scully. Are there any other comments, questions, or concerns? And just as a reminder, I also voted no on this item on October 11th, because I do believe deferred maintenance is just compounded cost to the city. We know what, we know what our needs are. We know what not having a rate increase this year does to future rate increases and also the capital costs on some of our high-ticket items. And so, I can't in good conscience vote for this. So, I will also be voting no.
This is a roll call vote. Counselor Scully.
No.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demont.
Yes.
Counselors, I'm sorry, Mayor Sights.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
I said yes. Oh, I said no. I'm sorry. No. Sorry. My apologies. Counselor Seymour, thank you so much. I wish to amend my vote to a no. It's just on robot there.
And although yes.
Thank you.
Lost in thought. The motion passes on a 4-2 vote. The next item before us is Counselor's Bill Number 34. Can I get a motion? And actually, I'm going to back up. Is there a presentation prior, or?
We, we do have a few slides that are basically the content in Attachment 18. If council would like that information, we can.
Yep. Why don't we go ahead before I ask for a motion? Let's do that.
Okay. While, while we're waiting for the PowerPoint, I'll go ahead and do some remarks. Good evening, Mayor Sights, Mayor Protem Demont, city councilors. Thank you for having me back. Yeah, that looks right. Thank you. Thanks for having me back, and thank you for the feedback that was provided before, and we're able to hopefully be responsive to some of the concerns. Again, I'm Andrew Spurgeon, long-range planner in community development. We were here two weeks ago, October 11th, for first reading of the 2040 Plan. We did conduct the public hearing at that time, but consideration of the plan was continued to this meeting. A new Attachment 18 was included in your packet. That includes a discussion of community engagement that went into the plan, a population projection for build-out of the plan, discussion of some methodology that went into the water supply plan, and quantification of those impacts for the location shown in Attachment 7. Next slide, please. Staff appreciates the importance of community engagement and the timing and amount of, pardon me, and the timing and amount of engagement was critical to producing this plan. Residents had more opportunities to offer feedback than any other plan the city has done, and in more formats and in multiple languages. At larger community events, we typically had some sort of quick exercise and then handed people postcards to direct them to our online surveys and our text polling activities that were available. So, we were able to reach up to 75,000 people through the city's incredible event schedule, which luckily, we were able to do that primarily in 2018 and 2019 before COVID. We did have Spanish translation services. This is not something that was done in prior comprehensive plans, and even a Mung translator who helped us meet with the Mung community. And the online surveys were in English and Spanish. Next slide, please. The 2040 Plan and all the city's prior comprehensive plans do anticipate build-out. Build-out assumes all vacant private lands, and I do mean vacant private lands, there's not, not open space, are developed, and some areas identified in the land use diagram are redeveloped. The result of this analysis with this plan is a decrease of 1,904 persons as compared to the previous plan's projected population. The projection of 127,519 is a conservative number. It's a conservative high number. In other words, you might say a worst-case scenario, depending on how you look at this. This assumes that the maximum possible densities for land use types are achieved at every site. This assumes that household sizes stay constant at 2.55 per household, even though we know that they're going down. 2020 census number is actually lower than that. And it also assumes that no residential land is purchased for open space in the future. Should, should household sizes continue to shrink, open spaces be acquired? And as we know from experience, sites are typically not maxed out in their density, it will be a lower number. The bottom of the, of the slide here shows the anticipated build-out of some of our peer communities in the front range that do identify a build-out number with their comprehensive plans. These communities anticipate growth in population from 22% to 46%. This is a far greater rate of growth than the 9.6% we anticipate in Westminster. Stated another way, the rate of growth in Westminster under this plan will average 1% or less a year over the planned horizon. And thus, the 2040 Plan is a slow-growth plan as compared to prior Westminster comprehensive plan, consistent with the managed growth guiding principle set forth in the plan. As a reminder, the plan establishes metrics in Appendix C that we'll use as part of a reporting process to come back to council. Tracking population is one of those. So, this will be something we will monitor and report back to council regularly, and if we need to make changes, as it is a living document. Next slide, please. The water supply plan accounts for both current and future water needs. Land use along with the effects of drought and conservation were considered with the most recent water supply plan, as presented to city council on March 15th and included as Attachment 8. In 2013, the planning process that the city used sampled 125 development projects to develop water demand assumptions. With the most recent water supply plan, staff conducted a full audit of more than 33,000 utility accounts that looked at the type of use, age of construction, and separated indoor and outdoor water use to ensure a data-driven approach and inspire confidence in the results. The graph shown on this slide was shown to city council at the November 2, 2020, presentation on the Water Efficiency Plan. The graph shows how overall weather-adjusted water demand has been declining over the last 20 years, even as population has increased in the Westminster service area, which goes beyond Westminster and includes federal heights and portions of unincorporated Adams and Jefferson Counties. Next slide, please. While the population projection of 127,519 identified earlier was a result of a citywide analysis, separately, Attachment 7 has been revised to include the net difference in residential units or commercial intensity on those 24 sites proposed for a change in land use as compared to the existing 2013 comprehensive plan in Attachment 7. Columns were added to the far-right side of Attachment 7 to quantify the change in units or commercial square footage. The net impact of those land use changes for those 24 locations is a reduction of 385 residential units and 11.2 million in commercial square feet. The slide actually, I think, says just 1.2 million. That's a typo. It's 11.2 million reduction. As a reminder from prior presentations, only one new multifamily site is included in the entire plan, four acres at the lower, at the lower 18 per unit per acre density on Lowell adjacent to Westminster Station, and no new sites for urban multifamily, what we used to consider our 36, are included in the plan. While the proposed Uplands project is proceeding under the existing 2013 comprehensive plan, the Westminster Heights transition area was included in the plan to inform how parks, trail connections in the public realm should be enhanced, especially in light of anticipated development east of Federal Boulevard, such as the St. Anthony 84th Avenue campus. Given the amount of concern over the inclusion of the transition area expressed by persons, including those here tonight, council could direct staff to remove that from Chapter 2, Section 2.2, titled Mixed Use Area, Mixed Use Places, rather. But we do hesitate on that because the plan text does provide additional context for the need for parks in this part of the city, including a 25 to 30-acre park similar in size to Westfield Village Park, which we believe would be responsive to the concerns we've heard from residents in that area. Another option for council to consider, if you're still not comfortable with the numbers in Attachment 7, you could direct staff to bring forward the residential changes as separate plan amendments through a later process. The plan does not change the zoning on any property. Only city council can do that through separate action. So, any land uses in the plan would be back before you as part of a zoning and PDP process. Next slide, please. This concludes the presentation. Would you like me to respond to the speakers and emails and voicemails that were received?
If you feel prepared to do so, please.
Sure. Again, this is a slow-growth plan that reduces the future residential and commercial development as compared to our existing plan. In looking at the emails that came in prior to the meeting, and then listening to the speakers tonight, the voicemail, Mr. and Mrs. Eisenstein, AJ Davis, who were speakers, and then AJ Davis and Danielle Seawackers, who submitted email comments, are describing some of the properties west of Lowell, west of the station area. They have presented some interesting ideas that staff has talked about. The densities that were shown to us are actually higher than anything we have in the comprehensive plan. Therefore, we did not include those, those requests for increases in residential density. We would offer that the appropriate avenue to pursue what they're talking about would be to update the Westminster Station plan and determine on if expansion of that plan is an appropriate thing, and bring that back to city council at a later time. I also have talked with the owner of the property at 7071 Lowell, which all four have identified as the junkyard. I believe the owner would take exception to being called a junkyard. He, he runs a needed business, and having worked with salvage yards in other communities, it's a pretty clean operation, and it's a little offensive that he keeps getting called a junkyard. He's just a guy trying to run his business. Brandon Jenkins' email seemed to be in support of the plan, in particular, the needs for residential employment development in the city, and in particular, his concern for opportunities for locations for startup businesses. Michael Jorgensen's email expressed some concern for what he called massive growth in such a short time. Again, this plan is a slow-growth plan compared to the existing plan averaging 1% or less a year. Larry, Larry Valente, I'm sorry, I almost called him Dino, because I think of him as Dino. He was one of the folks that was interviewed as part of this plan. His name is listed in the acknowledgements. He did not directly speak to the plan tonight, but he was very helpful in the feedback he gave us, and he really planted the seed for some things that got legs as we developed the plan. For example, he said we really need to look at areas that should be annexed. So, Appendix D of the plan includes an inventory of potential annexation areas. He also said that we need to look at what the plan talks about in transportation. He said RTD was cutting back services, and we felt that we needed to be responsive to that and what the other options are, and that's in Chapter 4 of the plan. He also thought we needed to really think about what's happening on the southern sector of the city as we're starting to see signs that, that the Denver and what you're seeing in such as the Berkeley area of Denver is starting to creep north, and that we need to keep our eye on that. So, that was really helpful feedback we got from Mr. Valente. Mr. Palmer did come up and speak. He made a comment about population. The population figure is included with Attachment 18 tonight, and as I just presented, too. Ms. Calaviti both sent an email and spoke here tonight. She asked for more time on the parks and open space portion of the plan. The plan was really intended to introduce that section at a high level within the context of health, wellness, and services, similar to the sustainability plan. The Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Plan is part of Westminster Forward, and that will take a deeper dive into those issues. In regard to the Westminster Heights area, the plan does call out the need for a 25 to 30-acre park. As I mentioned, that'd be similar in size to Westfield Village Park. And elsewhere, the plan identifies the need for more parks south of 92nd. These are not things included in the existing comprehensive plan, and it will behoove the Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Plan to be able to work from the recommendations in the 2040 Plan as it's doing its work that's forthcoming. We did pause the plan due to COVID. We were sensitive to that. I was originally going to come to you in April 2020 with this comprehensive plan. We did slow it down. We did talk to stakeholders, the community, about what was happening with employment, what was happening with our needs for human services, and we pulled back a number of the land use changes shown in the earlier draft. The email from Willow Papa George, and she's been very active in the record that's getting compiled for the Uplands project, as she lives across the street from that site. She did question the relationship of comprehensive plan and zoning, which we understand in Westminster is a little confusing compared to other places. Most of the city is planned unit development, and when you buy a property in a planned unit development, you're buying into a project and all the amenities and so forth that goes with that. And that's documented in our preliminary development plan and official development plan system. So, it is different than other places. I happen to think it's a beneficial system, that you're getting more than a land use, but you're actually getting a package of things when you buy a property. Comprehensive plan compliance is one of 10 criteria when evaluating those development plans. Since the Shaw Heights area was developed in Adams County, it does not have the benefit of that more typical form of Westminster PUD development. There, there are no land use changes proposed for the Uplands site as it falls under the existing plan. And so, in terms of, her questions about lack of notice, that's And so in terms of her questions about lack of notice, that's why there was no notice. There was no land use change at that location. Lucy Seber's email and later her voicemail again touched on several areas. Based on tonight's and past comments, my sense is she has a concern over the proposed uplands project. The public land dedication requirement was brought up in her email and her voicemail. This is not something that's in the plan. This is a code requirement. The plan isn't proposing to get rid of that requirement. The appropriateness of a project's public land dedication is something that that the decision maker has the decision to either agree with or not agree with. In this case, with uplands, it'll be subject of a future quasi judicial hearing of this council. And as interesting as it would be and perhaps responsive to the needs of the southern part of the city, we cannot designate private property as open space. That would be a taking under the law. And it is not, it is not staff's proposal to bring forward a plan that would be doing something illegal or it would get us sued. Michelle Trujillo's email also references the uplands specifically. Again, I think we've talked about that some. We did, as I said, include a recommendation for a community park in that area. The reason for the transition area included in the plan is to think about the other properties in the area and how transitions would occur to St. Anthony 84th Avenue or other adjacent properties. Again, if this is something that the council is not comfortable with, that's certainly something that could be pulled out of the plan. It would not be my best recommendation as a planner, but council has the authority to amend the plan in its motion to approve it or deny it. James Travis brought up several points. We did coordinate with all three school districts. They're, yes?
Can I ask you to pause? I have a message that an error occurred and I have been disconnected from the meeting. So I just need to get back on real quick. So my apologies. I have no idea how that happened. Yeah, so. Do the AV people need to pull me back as a panelist? Oh, it looks like my computer might just not be working. I apologize, Mr. Spurgeon. Here we go. Yeah, it appears that I. We may need to take a quick break while we have the AV specialists come take a peek at my computer. My apologies, everyone. Does anyone know how long it's been off? At the end of the world, you can still hear me. I know, we can still hear me. I don't know if we really need to pause, actually. You don't need to see my face.
We can still hear you. Let me check with the AV team and see if they know how long you've been disconnected. Hold, please.
I feel like he could take one for the team.
Six.
I have been brought, I just need to be brought over now. I'm no longer frozen.
I just moved you over as a panelist. So. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Spurgeon. Can we test your camera really quickly or are you? Oh, there you are.
And I was responding to the last one, so just to wrap up here, Mr. James Travis. We did coordinate with all three school districts. They had very helpful content that went into Chapter Five. We actually added some content based on feedback we got from the school districts. Public safety was very involved. I don't see them here anymore. Earlier in the evening, Dave Luster from Police, he was very helpful. Eric Burke and Fire were very helpful to me. The Transportation Mobility Plan, which this council adopted August 23rd, used the comprehensive plan as the input for the transportation model. So looking at the draft 2040 comprehensive plan and the assumptions for household and jobs did feed the transportation model. So we are working together as a group. His references to specific number of stories on a building makes me think he's referring to the uplands project, which again, we've talked about already.
Thank you so much, Mr. Spurgeon, for that detailed response to the communications we've received. I'm going to ask my colleagues. Is there anything else acting city or interim city manager Andrews you'd like to say? I think at this point, I might take a motion and have the comments, questions, and concerns come as a normal part of our motion process. Is anyone ready to make a motion on this item? Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselors Bill Number 34 on first reading to approve the 2040 comprehensive plan. This recommendation is based on a finding that the plan meets the criteria established in Section 11-3-2 of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Counselor Vols.
I second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Spurgeon, I just wanted to thank you. I think you did a wonderful job addressing everyone's concerns tonight, and it was pretty much on the fly, so I really appreciate your work on this. I will be voting in favor of this plan tonight.
Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I do appreciate the addendums that were added for this week's packet also, and then addressing and breaking down the business areas, especially the comments that we heard during the public comments part of it as far as the adding employment flex and giving us some opportunity in some of our areas where from a business standpoint, we were just a little too prescriptive in. And employment flex opens them up to a modern type of employment and doesn't necessarily, in all those areas that are on here, the North I-25, the West 120th, Church Ranch, Brook Hill, are really business areas already, so it doesn't change any of that. And I do appreciate also the fact that on the fly, and something that we've discussed before too, is that this does not affect zoning, that some of the questions that are already in front, that zoning has to be dealt by council and that moving forward, that's important. Also heard, and we've heard this throughout the process too, that, you know, there's there's concerns for parks and open space, which is this council has been in full agreement on and really important to the neighborhoods and a critical part of our vision plan too. So I appreciate that, and while I'm looking forward to the next couple of years as we move forward on a plan, I look forward to scrutinizing and making sure that that public land dedications are appropriate for that neighborhood and not necessarily for part of a bargaining chip. So those are my comments on that. Thank you.
Counselor Smith.
I just, I want to thank my colleagues for allowing more time to review the plan in more depth and hear from more residents on their thoughts. And I want to be mindful, acknowledge your work and staff's work in the comprehensive plan. But there's a lot of work to be done with it. I appreciate that you brought more slides to to show just how far and lengthy that conversations have gone. But with Westminster in a transition phase, I am concerned about the comp plan and what we're planning for the next 20 years. We've heard a lot of considerable and read a lot of considerable feedback as far as the plan goes. And ultimately, the use of this plan is for residents, just as it is for businesses or developers over 20 years, marking 2040. And there needs to be a balance, and it's clear that there's direction and have an involvement with all levels from businesses to residents. And it's clear to me from the feedback that we've received that it's more clear for businesses and developers on how the plan is and less clear for residents on what to expect with the plan. And so with that, there has to be some kind of balance in having them both equalized in understanding. And so for that reason, there are a lot of concerns with that that comes with that. So I will be voting no against this for the concerns revolving around our residents and the ambiguity of the plan itself.
Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon, for all your work on this. I know I mentioned last week that I, or last time we talked about this two weeks ago, that I'm a no vote. I haven't changed that. I think that we are in that transitional period. I hope that we can work on this more if it doesn't pass and come back with it because there's a lot of good in there. I am, however, concerned still with the way that it's tied to the water project and plan, and I'm critical of that still in a not-quite-unborn. I'm not saying that it's 100% not the right plan, but I'm just not there. So it doesn't make sense for me to support this with my concerns on that plan. But I do appreciate the extra effort that you took in bringing all the information tonight. It was actually really good and helpful information, I felt, so thank you.
I'm going to be voting in support of this tonight. I really appreciate the robust and comprehensive community outreach that went into this. I appreciate a new lens that has been added to the comprehensive plan. Issues like public health, equity, climate are all found within the pages of this plan, addressing it at a local level are found within the pages of this plan. And so I just want to say thank you for your work. And I think at this point, it's time for a roll call vote. Or, I'm sorry, Counselor Vols, right?
One more comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Seymour.
I'm, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I want to make it perfectly clear too, I had a lot of questions that were answered, and I appreciate the extra time. It was very important for me and I, so I appreciate my colleagues doing that too. But I want to be very clear where I'm at tonight, so this doesn't catch anyone by surprise. I think too, we're at a transitional time. This is an outstanding plan, but I think we have, what I have seen too, and I don't know if it was COVID, I'm so glad tonight, we had so many people come out. Finally, thank goodness. But also community engagement continues, and that's a great thing. I think we have great, great opportunities to move forward with this plan, but I would like to move it down just a little bit and continue to work, so.
All right. And I'll just remind everyone that the previous comprehensive plan in 2013 had both less engagement and was voted on actually as the last item that that council voted on before a new council was sworn in. So very, very in line with what the tradition is. But this is a roll call vote, let's. Counselor Smith.
No.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demont. Mayor Sights.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
No.
And Counselor Scully.
Yes.
The motion fails on a 3-3 vote. Thank you very much, Mr. Spurgeon. That was the last item of business for the Westminster City Council. We will now convene as the WIDA Board, the Westminster Economic Development Agency. The roll call will stand from the previous meeting. The first item before us is a consideration of the minutes at the proceeding meeting. Can I get a motion? Mayor Protem Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the minutes as the September 27th, 2021 meeting is presented.
Counselor Seymour.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second. This is a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay. First item is Item 3A1. Can I get a motion? Mayor Protem Demont.
Thank you. I move to authorize the Westminster Economic Development Authority Executive Director to enter into a one-year sole source agreement with the Lammer Company LLC to provide consultant services regarding the development of the Downtown Westminster project.
Counselor Scully.
I second.
There has been a motion and a second, and this is a roll call vote. Vice Chair Demont.
Yes.
Chairperson Sights.
Yes.
Board Member Seymour.
Yes.
Board Member Scully.
Yes.
Board Member Smith.
Yes.
And Board Member Vols.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. Can we finish out the item? Mayor Protem.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. I move to authorize the Westminster Economic Development Authority Executive Director to enter into a one-year sole source brokerage agreement with the Lammer Company LLC for brokerage services for the Downtown Westminster project.
And Counselor Scully.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Chairperson Sights.
Yes.
Board Member Seymour.
Yes.
Board Member Scully.
Yes.
Board Member Smith.
Yes.
Board Member Vols.
Yes.
Vice Chair Demont.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. The next item before us is an IGA. It's Item 3B. Can I get a motion? Counselor Smith. Intergovernmental Cooperation, ICA, not.
I move to authorize the Acting Executive Director to execute an intergovernmental cooperation agreement, ICA, in substantially the same format as presented, which allows the Westminster Economic Development Authority, WIDA, to provide parking license agreement fees to the city.
Counselor Scully.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Board Member Seymour.
Yes.
Board Member Scully.
Yes.
Board Member Smith.
Yes.
Board Member Vols.
Yes.
Vice Chair Demont.
Yes.
And Chairperson Sights.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. The next item before us is Resolution Number 215. Can I get a motion? Counselor Smith.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 215, authorizing the Acting Executive Director to execute a purchase and sale agreement for Lot 2, Block A Ford in Downtown Westminster with Downtown Westminster Residences LLC in substantially the same form as presented.
Chair Scully.
I second.
Or not chair, I'm sorry, board member. I'm really getting tired right now, sorry.
I am, I second, yeah.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns with any other members, from any other members of the board? Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to point out that this is an opportunity for continuation of owned units in our downtown and that based on the great turnout for the initial 34 units that this builder wishes to continue to do business with our city. So I want to thank Downtown John Burke and his staff for bringing this forward to us, and appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other comments or questions, this is a roll call vote. Board Member Scully.
Yes.
Board Member Smith.
Yes.
Board Member Vols.
Yes.
Vice Chair Demont.
Yes.
Chairperson Sights.
Yes.
Board Member Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 roll call vote. This concludes last public item of business before WIDA. We will now have as Westminster, do I need to reconvene as Westminster City Council? Or is the, I'm sorry.
I would recommend that, yes.
Okay. We need to reconvene as Westminster City Council as we will be entering into executive session. City Attorney Frankel, can you please read the title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The proposed executive session is to confer with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice concerning the status of litigation of opioid-related claims pursuant to CRS 246402B and E1, as well as Section 1113C, 3, and 7 of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Thank you. Members of council, you have heard the title of the executive session. I will pull. I will poll each of you to see if you are willing to go into executive session on this item, starting on my right. Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Okay, and the mayor as well. City Attorney Frankel, can you please read the second item? Is there not another item?
Excuse me, I believe that's the sole executive session.
Is that the sole? Okay.
And I believe that we, I do not need more than 30 minutes. Otherwise, I would ask for you to extend the clock tonight.
Okay.
I believe that would run at 10:30, but I believe Mr. Munch is prepared to brief council on the exec session, and I don't think it's going to take more than 30 minutes.
Perfect. All right. While this concludes the meeting, we will reconvene in executive session.